After state just how monumental her work was for Floyd and I. She works in the field of international relations and has spent her career traveling the world in helping nation states or international organizations or group of people resolve their conflict. And it was through her work that she realized that all human conflict emerges from violations of dignity, even if those violations are a perceived violation of dignity. So we're talking about everything from a quarrel with a loved one to a war between nations, all resulting from violations of dignity. So Donna Hicks has an incredible resume. She's one of the type of people who, for instance, got called into Northern Ireland in the 90s with Archbishop Desmond Tutu to help resolve the conflict there. So she brings this incredible experience, you know, to her writing. And of course, we tend, we revere her writing and draw from her, not only her ideas, but quotes. And this is one. Good people with good intentions can harm others if they're not conscious of dignity. So it's, it's really, we might think we're, you know, exercising kindness, for instance, but unless we're conscious of dignity, we might actually be doing unintended harm. So what is dignity? Now, we use verbatim her definition. It's a two-part definition. First of all, it's our inherent value and worth as human beings. Each of us has it. No one is more valuable than anyone else when it comes to dignity. It's, the example I love that Donna uses is she equates dignity to a human baby, right? And we use words like priceless, invaluable. You know, it's a value and worth that you cannot quantify, right? It's immeasurable and it is innate. You have, you can't earn it, you can't lose it, you can't, you know, order it off Amazon Prime. It is there, you, you know, you have it. The only thing we can do is honor it or violate it. Now she does a really good job of differentiating it from respect, which was mind-blowing to me because people often use dignity and respect synonymously. However, dignity is innate, respect is not. Respect can be earned, it can be lost. It is very, very different than dignity. And so this has been a really important point with our work with schools because a lot of, especially the explicit expectations we see written on walls and that type of thing, the word respect is used, right? And so what we, what we encourage people to do is consider, is that really what you're talking about here or is it something else? Now, if you look at the second part of Donna's definition is that dignity is not only our inherent value and worth, but it's also a consciousness, it's a mindset that recognizes two things, our equal human value and worth, in other words, our shared humanity, and how vulnerable that is, meaning each, for each of us, our dignity can easily be violated, right? Each of us can easily be harmed. Now, the flip side of that is each of us can easily harm one another. Within this realm that gets called equity, right? A lot of times attention is spent on the big, the big bad systems that are out there, the isms, right? And if you think about dignity violations as a spectrum, on one side is the violence of the violations that, you know, get wrapped up into things like, you know, classism and races and sexism. And then on the other side are these subtle violations that we do to each other all the time, right? I can easily harm my wife, for instance, if I am not fully available to listen to her when she needs me, when she needs to be heard, right? So we do it all the time. Again, the, the marker of a healthy relationship is not the absence of conflict. It's how we navigate our way through those conflicts. And when we do harm each other, how, how equipped we are to repair that harm that we do and actually restore things. Sometimes it's as easy as taking responsibility and apologizing, but that seems hard to do. Here we are, 2021, and it seems hard for many of us to actually apologize when we treat each other in ways that are less than dignifying. Here's another quote that Donna says and Dr. Hicks, "Even though we're all born with dignity, we aren't all born knowing how to act like it." As a matter of fact, this has a depth to it because we are biologically wired to actually violate dignity. You know, that fight or flight response, we are going to protect ourselves at all costs. We're going to survive and I am going to violate other people's dignity. It doesn't matter, right? I'm going to protect myself. Our egos function that way too, right? So we are actually predisposed to violating dignity more than we are honoring it. However, the good news is that we have these modern parts of our brain. We can actually learn and reset things so that honoring dignity becomes our norm. It is possible and we are capable of it and that's the good news. Couple of things here, I'm just about to wrap up, but I was reading some research just this past week and I thought, oh, it would be, it'd be appropriate to mention this here. A few things. This is from a study that came out in 2020, just over a year ago, and it was in the workplace. And so when we're talking about this work of belonging and dignity, we're not only talking about students. As Dr. Skeeter says, you know, retaining and recruiting talent is not only, you know, a priority in the corporate world, it's a priority here in our schools. We want the best teachers we can get working with our students. And so there is research in this particular study by Willis Towers Watson on a culture of dignity and what it supports. It imports increased employee well-being, lower stress, recruiting and retaining talent. It promotes innovation and performance, collaboration and higher engagement. And there's been a couple of studies that reinforce that higher engagement in the workforce and it is significant. So within this particular study, employees were surveyed about the degree to which they perceive their dignity being honored, right? And so those who reported high levels of dignity, right? That they felt that they were treated with dignity at work. Those reporting high levels of that, 87% of them were highly engaged in their work. Now, those who were reporting lower levels of dignity, meaning they didn't feel like they were treated with dignity, only 5% were highly engaged. That's a huge gap, I mean monumental. Then all of those findings were reinforced by a study later in 2020 where that showed that the employees that were reporting high levels of dignity were almost 15 times more engaged in their work than those that were reporting low levels of dignity. Now, I don't know about you all, those of you who are listening who are parents, but I am a parent of a one-year-old, a three-year-old, a 14-year-old and a 17-year-old. And in terms of my, the teachers that I want for my own children, I want them engaged with their work, right? I want them to be, to belong in their workplace so that they can help my student, my children perform at their best. And so ultimately what we offer is a framework and a lot of the orientation work is orienting them to these tools. What you see on the left-hand side is a framework for better honoring dignity. We have core dispositions that we develop and we start that process off in workshops and then people can kind of backpack on their own with it and do their own development. Those are listening, empathy, patience and openness. When those dispositions are present within a relationship, it's so much easier to honor dignity. As a matter of fact, truly listening to someone is in and of itself a dignifying act. Then we have the indicators of belonging, the extent to which people feel appreciated, validated, treated fairly and accepted. Those give us some metrics that we can use to track our progress and also to plan for improvement. And then we have standards for dignity. These standards can guide the development and improvement of our practices, our behaviors and our policies, building partnerships and community, repairing harm and restoring the relationship, affirming differences and uniqueness, not just who people are, but also what they do, recognizing hard work, recognizing effort. And then presuming competence and positive intent, and that can be as simple as lending the benefit of the doubt. What you see on the right-hand side is the flip side of the framework. And what we've discovered over the past three years is that this side of the framework is just as important as the other side because it helps school teams develop a literacy, right? A dignity literacy of sorts where they can better identify the unhealthy practices and either replace them with healthy practices or just get rid of them, right? We don't, we don't, like, when I think of indignity in schools, like, what comes to mind for me immediately is the dunce cap. You know, we might not use dunce caps in schools anymore, but there are plenty of routine subtle dignity violations that are present in day-to-day operations. And so the work really that we ultimately, you know, aspire to help schools, districts and teams with is identifying those practices and policies of indignity and doing something better, you know, something that's more healthy. And what you see here is really my conclusion, that what you see here is our mental map. And ultimately what we help groups do is move through this process. We integrate design thinking and improvement science. And it starts with assessing the climate, being able to disaggregate those data, to try to look for patterns and see, are there groups of people, you know, that are experiencing a lesser sense of belonging than others? My work with staff, oftentimes with the data disaggregation, there are predictable job classifications that come up predictably as experiencing a lesser sense of belonging, right? We have to figure out how to disaggregate the data in as many different ways so we can identify who among us is not feeling like they belong. We can drill down and conduct empathy interviews and collect qualitative data, all in the spirit of identifying and defining a specific problem that we can work on. We call those problems belonging challenges. Then if you look at step four, we have standards for dignity tools. Donna Hicks has 10 essentials of dignity, 10 things through her work that she's identified that every single one of us want from one another and every single one of us can do for one another, at least in the interpersonal domain. So we use those tools to help brainstorm and ideate, what are all the different ways that we can go about trying to solve this problem, trying to address this belonging challenge? And ultimately we have to decide on one and prototype and then test it out, put it into play and then reassess. Are we indeed improving the climate here for everyone while closing any gaps that we might be experiencing belonging? So with that, as long as we can figure out the volume issue, I'd be happy to respond to any questions that you might have.
Okay, we're trying. Okay, no feedback. Can you hear us, John? Or hear me, because I'm the one talking? Okay, okay, so you can hear us, we can't hear you. Hold on just a second. Okay, John. We think what we might need you to do is to mute your mic while you're listening to the questions and then unmute when you're answering.
Your mic while you're listening to the questions and then unmute when you're answering the questions.
Okay, we'll try now. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna try this now. Can you hear us? Or hear me? There's a lag.
So I can, I can hear you on YouTube. I think there's a significant delay though.
That's okay, we're gonna make that work.
Who would like to start us off?
President Bates. So John, I appreciate you taking the time to meet with us, certainly looking forward to the next day of training that I said in the first day today. The question I have, which is maybe part of the second day of training, but I think would be something the board finds informational, is what are the action steps? What are the next steps as it relates to, you know, here we are with PD and our educators and our administrators and curriculum leaders. What is the next steps on what we're actually telling children? What we're actually, you know, getting them informed on this, this ideology or this thought? And how does it impact either what we're teaching, you know, what we're trying to get the students' behaviors to change or not change, et cetera? Just kind of maybe elaborate on what that looks like in next steps. I know that's not this year for us as a district, but just how does, how do we think about that going forward?
Sure, well, the focus is, is on the development of the educators and of the leaders, you know, the administrators, and the focus really is on climate, culture and climate. This is not, let me turn down, off my phone. The, this is not curricular or instructional. It has nothing to do with, you know, teaching the students a particular, you know, body of content or ideology or anything like that. The focus is on actually the teachers being able and the folks who work in the schools to be able to identify, you know, the degree to which people are experiencing belonging. And that's why we emphasize the collection of data so much. Now, in the absence of data, there are some, there are certain standards, for instance, that, that we, that we focus on. And even through dealing with those standards and pulling various examples, folks tend to see ways that they can immediately improve, even in the absence of that. And I'll give it, I'll give an example. One of the examples that come up over and over and over again is the use of public behavior charts within classrooms. Now, it's usually in elementary schools, but when groups really unpack, you know, what's going on with behavior charts, there's usually an agreement that the attempt is to motivate people by, through basically public humiliation or that's redundant, through humiliation. And when groups of people actually identify practices like that, that they feel, wait a second, I never thought about it like that, then they can work on replacing it with something better. Now, the action is going to look different in different places. One of the examples that we'll get into tomorrow, when we get into a case study at a particular high school that after they implemented their first belonging inventory and disaggregated their data and they identified a specific group that was coming up very significantly lower than other student groups. They conducted empathy interviews and tried to, you know, identify what some of the root causes were that were specifically causing this particular group to experience a lack of acceptance. I mean, they narrowed it down to that one indicator of belonging. And what they discovered as far as an opportunity for improvement is that they weren't inviting students into extracurricular activities at the school like they could. These particular groups of students weren't putting themselves out there and the exit interviews they were conducting involved students saying, you know, things started to change around, around here for me after I got pulled into an extracurricular activity. Someone actually invited me in. And so what their focus for the subsequent year became was issuing invitations, not just extracurricular activities, but the focus, their leadership strategy became inviting people in, right? And it was staff, students, it was in the lunchroom, it was in classrooms during group work. That became their high-leverage strategy. So that's what they needed to work on, but it's going to be different in different locations, you know? So what we try to do is equip people with, with a process to tune into what's important in terms of the very human needs that we all have that end up resulting in environments where we could thrive or, you know, or not.
Does anybody else have anything? President Bates, if I may.
Mr. Crown Apple, I was just wondering, what specific policies within our district here did you identify as either lacking equity, lacking belonging in the classrooms? Is there something that literally raised a red flag where you think your work can be more specific rather than generalized to help meet the underserved students that need the help that they need?
Thanks for that question. I haven't conducted any type of policy audit or anything like that, so I don't have an answer to that question. One thing I have noticed in terms of systemic practices is that there doesn't seem to be an institutionalized way of actually measuring belonging. There are some schools that are starting to do some good work and what I would recommend is to tap into the practices that are emerging in those particular schools to inform the broader system, to see, you know, is what some of our schools doing, you know, along the lines of belonging, actually something that we could possibly institutionalize as a district? But up to this point, in terms of board policies, I have not conducted any policy
President Bates, if I may, I have a follow-up question. So you said maybe what would be helpful to this district is look to other districts that might have similar programs surrounding equity, dignity and inclusion. I actually did look into Kansas City's school district and they have an equity program that focuses on belonging and inclusiveness. From what I can find, it started in 2017. Anywhere between 70 or 80% of the student body throughout the district felt like they belonged. And then if you compare those to academic performance and outcomes from the students they're trying to reach, they've either gone down percentage-wise or they have stayed stagnant. So my concern is, is I think it's definitely important for students to belong. I'm just wondering, at what point in time can this district expect to actually, as far as the timeline, when can we maybe see some real outcomes?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I'm interrupting. I lost volume after you said it started in 2017. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm trying to refresh on YouTube and the wheel is just spinning.
All right, okay, we're gonna try this now. This is fun. Okay. Oh, that's right, so, okay.
You want me to re-ask the question again? So my question, Mr. Crown Apple, was in the school district that I looked at, that it's Kansas City, and in 2017, from what I can find is they implemented equity, diversity and inclusion. And, you know, it's really important for that district to have their students have a sense of belonging and their staff to have that kind of culture. So again, they started that in 2017 and according to their stats, 70 to 80% of staff and/or students felt like they belonged. But when you compare that to the performance of those academic outcomes from those students who they're trying to reach, it either, either stayed stagnant or it dropped, it went down. So I guess my question is, when can we as a district start to see some real outcomes from these students that we're, we're trying to help?
Yeah, I think I understand the question. I'm not familiar with the program or the data, so I can't speak to that. And just for clarity, earlier what I was suggesting was looking towards some of the schools that are within your own district for practices that could be scaled. That's primarily what I was suggesting. I think it's, the most direct answer would be that we need to be able to have those metrics in the first place. If belonging is indeed a goal of yours, connected with, you know, your second goal. But in terms of, you know, the leap toward achievement, what we, what you'd want to do is have a, you know, carefully constructed logic model there that would guide, that would guide that work. Because there are a number of factors, right? We know that belonging is a major inhibitor of people performing at their best, so we know that's one, but there could be other things at play too. But I would definitely encourage measuring that directly if that is something, you know, that is important to that second goal in your strategic plan. And what I mean is institutionalizing some metrics. Like I said, there are some schools that I'm aware of that are starting to measure it on their own and it would be worth trying to learn from what they're doing to see if it's worth scaling.
For school districts who have adopted... Okay, we're gonna try this again. For school districts who have adopted your equity plan, do you have a success story to share about how things have improved for those students that we're trying to, that you were trying to reach and target? Can you tell a story so that we have a better understanding of how that specifically helped those students get a leg up where they might have lagged behind?
This is new for me navigating between this, so let me turn down the phone to make sure there's no echo. Okay, yeah, I think hearing from the students is the most powerful example. So one of the stories that we're going to share tomorrow on day two of the training is from our pilot cohort. Now, our pilot cohort was just down the road in Francis Al and there are two of the high schools that we're going to highlight in, in that particular case. Now, they were our first cohort, right? And that was just over a year before the pandemic hit. So as Dr. Skeeter said, there's been some interruption here in terms of, you know, the, the trajectory that we were on, but the success stories from those two high schools are significant in terms of the qualitative and anecdotal evidence coming out of the changes in climate and culture. I'm going to be showing a video tomorrow from one of the particular high schools that was a student-made video. The climate had shifted so dramatically within the course of one year that the students approached the principal and asked, some students in a journalism class approached the principal and asked if they could make a documentary-style video on how the culture had completely turned around. And hearing specific types of examples from students, for example, one of the things that they, that one of the students talks about is how they weren't trusted to even leave their, their classrooms, to go to the bathroom without an adult monitor before, you know, this turnaround. And, you know, there's a student saying that they weren't allowed to ever wear hats and how important it was on a bad hair day to be able to do that. A lot of little things, but it ends up being... A lot of little things, but it ends up being this very inspiring story where it's obvious from listening to the students and seeing them glow that they're experiencing a culture in which they can grow and thrive, instead of one that stifles, stifles their growth. That's going to be one example. The other example is going to include a little bit more quantitative data collection, again, focused in on collecting belonging data, and then using the anecdotal stories and the qualitative data to illustrate the change.
I'm gonna ask one more question and give my peers an opportunity to ask questions here. So where do parents fall in, in this sense of belonging? How can they fit in? Parents who want to advocate for their child if they're on IEP plan, or, you know, other special needs, or socioeconomic, or any subgroup that has the room for improvement? How can they look to get involved in this process?
So my work, being focused on professional development, you know, is obviously primarily with the staff, but that is, that's one of the dimensions that we promote, you know, applying those standards for dignity, building partnerships and community, the families in the community are a big part of that, right? And so just the concept of not dominating is huge for some people, because oftentimes people in positions, I know I can speak for myself, in the classroom, you know, I didn't fully recognize all the power that I held within that role. And so actually using those dignity standards, it doesn't just apply to, you know, work with students, but also to family and community engagement. And then, you know, the sky is the limit in terms of where, you know, groups like schools can go in terms of creating a culture of dignity. I could envision something like a dignity program that involved, that involved parents in terms of, even for me, like, one of the, I write about this stuff, and I cannot emphasize this, I cannot under, I cannot overemphasize this. This is hard work. Oftentimes, I see things published in articles and journals and magazines and so on, or on Twitter, where people say, you know, ultimately, this is all about relationships. And while that is true, it is horribly incomplete, because relationships are extraordinarily hard work. It's hard enough to maintain relationships with the people that we live with, right? It's constant work, it's constant effort, you know, no one's taught how to do it right. It requires a lifetime of engagement. And so that relationships that are more transactional in nature, that we might have, you know, at work, are extraordinarily hard. So speaking as, you know, from my perspective as a parent, this is something I'm constantly thinking about, constantly working on, writing about, and it still is very difficult to engage with my, my own children in a manner aligned with dignity all the time, right? And so I could see, I could envision all kinds of things springing out of a school that was going all in with trying to shape a culture of dignity that would actually encompass parents as partners, you know, within that, that process. But in terms of my involvement, you know, I am, I'm primarily working with staff, although with the, the original cohorts that we had were school teams. And I can certainly envision representatives from the parent, you know, community being involved with those teams. But that's really a site-based decision, you know, by whoever is leading those teams.
Good question. Anyone else? No more questions.
Seeing no other questions, John, thank you for your time, and not only the time that you're spending with the board, but with district staff as well. We really do appreciate it.
My pleasure. Have a good evening, everyone.
All right, well, wrapping up there. Any interest in our recess, or are we good to go? Thoughts from the board? All right. Next up this evening, old business, we'll be revisiting the mitigative measures. Would you like to tee this up?
Yes, we have, in the board packet, included literally a copy of the mitigation measures from the last board meeting. There are three columns, if you remember that document. This boils down to what was ultimately approved by the Board of Education at the last board meeting. And so via that conversation at that board meeting, we said that we'd come back and bring these mitigative, I'm sorry, mitigation measures back to you all, and that's why you have the document that is in the board packet itself. Some people may or may not believe this, we are simply responding to the changes as they are happening. So I emailed the board a copy of a modified quarantine update that came from St. Charles County Department of Public Health, literally on yesterday. So I have four slides that we can utilize just to bring you all up to speed, specifically the public. I emailed the board a bulleted list of the summaries last night in terms of what we were made aware of yesterday, yesterday afternoon. So we'll just go through these four slides and then see where the conversation goes. So according to these new modified quarantine basics, wearing a mask allows for close contacts to stay in school. This is a county, St. Charles County Department of Public Health option only. This is not state-based, this is an option in terms of a modification of the, a revision of the modification quarantine rules that the county's Department of Public Health has provided. So in discussions with leadership, if numbers increase, this is an option. If numbers were to drastically increase, this is something that could be retracted, right? Just a disclaimer, important for the record to show, if things were to turn completely south, if this is something that needed to roll back, we'd have conversations with county health, and they would provide direction when it comes to that. So effective, which would be Thursday, and this would not be retroactive, we asked that a number of times, this would not be, and this is not eligible for any degree of retroactivity, the changes that we will describe would be effective again on September 30th. So St. Charles County Department of Public Health shared this with county superintendents yesterday afternoon, and then they shared more detail with, more detail with nurses, literally this afternoon, at 3:00 this afternoon was when that information was shared. So we need to go through any procedural adjustments and calibrate with nurses and administrators on Wednesday to go ahead and make this active on the 30th. So in summary, schools that have a 2% or higher in terms of percentage of cases will be expected to revisit the implementation of mitigation strategies. I know we spent a great deal of time having conversation, let's say, conversation around percentage points. This is what the county weighed in with yesterday, and then provided update again today. Schools with a 4%, not 5, but a 4% or higher case rate are not eligible and will need to revert to the in-home quarantine. Schools will have to implement, implement, excuse me, school-based contact tracing in order to utilize this modified quarantine. Last slide, this is a quick summary of what we are talking about. Close contacts between 0 and 6 feet, who are consistently and appropriately wearing a well-fitted mask. That is italicized and underlying purposefully, that has to be the mile marker. Students that are consistently and appropriately wearing a well-fitted mask now qualify for a modified quarantine, regardless if, regardless whether or not the positive case is wearing a mask. If the close contact remains symptom-free throughout the duration of the quarantine period. The close contact continues to consistently and appropriately wear a well-fitted mask during the duration of the quarantine period. This must continue to, and with this modified quarantine, again, this is modified, so the modified quarantine outside, the quarantine itself continues outside of the regular school day itself. So this is to keep students in school. I posted like multiple times, right? Our primary drive is to keep staff and students in school. This aligns with that, right, in terms of the modified quarantine process itself. And they may still qualify for a shortened quarantine period after seven days with no negative symptoms, no test or symptoms, and after 10 days without any symptoms. And again, this will only apply for close contacts in school-based settings, not for home or community contacts. It's hotter off the press than I would even like for you all to see, but this is literally information that was just shared with us literally this week. As I said, we were made aware of the superintendents on Monday afternoon, had conversation, I emailed the board what I knew at that point in time last night, and then again, on Tuesday afternoon, again, today, nurses were made aware of this. So we need at least a day of calibration. I know we're just coming off of changes, we need at least a day of calibration to move forward with this, but there are huge benefits to us doing so, and we, and we are planning, we are moving forward with this on Thursday, September 30th.
Before we open up for questions, can you clarify, because we have these mitigative measures in front of us, and they mentioned mitigative measures, is it succinct, or is there difference, do you know?
No, they, they have not defined what mitigative measures would mean for individual school districts. They are leaning upon the school districts themselves to ultimately define what those mitigative measures would in fact entail.
All right, we'll open it up for questions.
Dr. King, can you quantify the huge impacts? We've now been in school for a month. How many close contacts does this, maybe this is a question for Jerry, but...
I was gonna hand the question off, actually.
Yeah, how many does this actually impact? Is this just a percentage sense, or how we think about them?
I think it would be pretty hard to determine. Based on the close contact and the contact tracing that we were engaging in prior, if the positive did not have a mask on, there was no need to investigate the number of other people who did have a mask on, because it required two masks in that situation. So we don't have definitive quantitative data, but I do know that there are situations where students realize that once their mask did not protect, like, did not keep them in school, that they then chose not to wear a mask because they realized they were reliant on another person. So I do believe that this will provide an avenue for students who desire to maintain attendance.
You said this was a school contact only, is that correct?
That is correct. So...
To positive cases.
So a home or a community-based contact would not fall under the umbrella of this modification process?
So a positive student that would have three siblings at home, say, I'm just using a number, then they would not be quarantined? Is that what I'm understanding in our school district?
If I may, Director Shaper, if a positive student has three siblings at home, that would be considered a home contact for those three siblings, and they would have to quarantine because they are being exposed in the home setting. But conversely, if that child was in a kindergarten classroom and exposed three other students who were masked, those three other students who were not siblings would be able to continue to attend school if they had been masked at the time of contact.
So that's contact other than the household, I presume, is what you're saying, outside of school?
So if a student is a close contact of a positive person at home, or at the park, at the mall, at a basketball practice, at a hockey game, that student must quarantine at home, per county health guidance. If a student is a close contact of another student in the classroom setting at school, and that close contact is masked, he or she may resume school attendance.
Dr. Barbara? Yeah, I'd just like to clarify. Are we still maintaining the mask optional at this time? I mean, I see the mitigations, but are we, we haven't, I haven't seen anything that says that we need to change that situation. So are we, but that would change as a percentage of, like, 2% if there were 2% in schools, and also 4% at a higher case rate?
So the mask is still the singular most impactful mitigation step that we can put in place, right? The board's made it clear, does not want to see a mask mandate. So I will address your question in terms of the 2% to 4%. At 2%, what the county is telling us is they are seeing how quickly things ramp up from 2% to a much larger percentage, which is why they are wanting to see mitigative measures or steps be put in place, which is where we guesstimated we landed, right, with our previous conversation about Dwellow, right? In terms of it being over 5%, but then watching other buildings that were bordering, kind of bubbling toward 2%, but they never reached that point, we could tell, right, from just looking at our local data, 2% was an important metric. So that's what county health is leaning in on, is that 2% number. But again, the thought with 2% and increasing the stringent nature of the mitigation strategies is to prevent headed toward that 4% or a higher percentage. Again, to keep school doors open, the sooner you intervene, the better off you're going to be.
So we are still masks optional until we reach any of these percentages?
Unless the board moves in a different direction, right? We will continue with our current practice, right? And if there are buildings that are reaching a point where something needs to happen in terms of intervention, we know what we need to do and when we need to do it.
All right, thank you.
Dr. Labak, can you, and I apologize I didn't ask for this data, but where do we stand now? Do we have any schools that are in that orange zone, or can you speak to how Dwellow is doing? What is the status of percentages right now?
I would say, I looked at the data in several points that I've even shared, I think I shared interim data with you at the last board meeting, and then have done a couple of spot checks since then. And since the meeting that we had on the 9th, where we highlighted the buildings in orange and red, Dwellow was in red, there were a few in yellow, and we really shared that information with the community on where those buildings were headed, and put mitigation measures in in Dwellow. We've seen a steady decline since then, and even specifically since we've put the mitigative measures in, or even showcased them to the public prior to the last board meeting, we continue to see a decline. I would say our highest district average positivity was around right under 1% at one point in time, and now we're at 0.43% as of yesterday. Seeing a good decline there, and I feel like that's attributed to some of the measures that we've put into place.
President Bates, if I may?
Absolutely.
Dr. King, can you speak to a little bit of the process and dialogue between yourself, the other superintendents, the county executive and the health department, maybe starting with the summer with this concept, because I think you alluded to it in past meetings, that this was, you know, an ask or require, or an ask from the superintendents in the county to change to something like this? Could you just maybe get a little background history, and then the back and forth that has since, you know, begun during the school?
I would say a little bit of forecasting occurred in May and June, if we were going to be, including Delta, the Delta variant in May, late May, early June is not what it was in August, right? Was not what it was in August. But projecting that if we were going to be in a situation where we were in a non-mask mandate environment, that the decision for others in the classroom to not mask completely outweighed the decision for individuals within the classroom to mask. So literally, the behavior of someone that was opting to not mask could still force someone out of the classroom that was in fact wearing a mask. Trying to provide a bit of a balance in terms of people having the right to choice, and ultimately dealing with the consequences of said choice, but that someone else's choices don't overweight the choices that one was making individually. We saw that as something that could potentially be an issue, and we were trying to get ahead of said issue with something like this. My preference would have been, we would have been able to start the year, if not with a full mask mandate, but with something that looked like this, so that for that individual, student, and their family that was opting to wear a mask, it would be able to keep them in school regardless of what was going on. And so we, quite honestly, kept having conversation and dialogue around that, as superintendents, with county health, Department of County Health leadership. with county health, Department of County Health leadership, with the executive branch of St. Charles County as well. Just continue to have conversation, continue to have dialogue. And things began to, it appears as though things began to move pretty quickly as late as Friday of last week with official notification on Monday of what, yesterday of what was going to happen. So it's been an ongoing request, not just from this superintendent, but from others in the county as well. So as supes, we have been talking, it's been snow daylight in terms of the frequency of talk. Lots of conversation, formally and informally, to gauge where we are individually as a district, but also what's going on in county.
Thanks. President Bates, if I may. So Dr. Lebrat, I'm actually not too surprised to see the numbers come down. If you look at the county in terms of positivity rates, I mean, we were starting the year at 14 and a half. In the Winsfield District, I think the last I looked were eight and a half. That's just generally across the board, not even in the county. If you look at the state, you look at, for example, Green County where the outbreak of Delta variant started there back to like June rates. And so it's almost, there's a level of expectation, I think, across many that this trend will continue. And the next variant I'm sure is around the corner and we'll be told what that is. But at least for now, I see the trends, you know, across the board. I think as well, at least in this county and certainly across the state, they've hit some milestones that are being applauded in terms of vaccination rates that have increased and continue to move up. Is that, would you, you know, is that a fair, you know, characterization summary? I think it is, but I just want to get your thoughts as well.
I would absolutely agree that we are seeing the decline of the Delta variant, or so we would hope, based on the stats that we're seeing. But I think that that is accompanied with some of the mitigation factors we put into place to see such a sharp decline in such a short amount of time. But I absolutely agree that it's declining in the area and that is also contributing to our good numbers so far.
So when and where we can modify experiences for students, that's what we're looking to do. Timberland had their homecoming dance on Saturday outside. Very, very good feedback as it relates to that. We've already talked with Holt about their plans for Saturday in terms of outdoor homecoming dance as well. Again, as I said back earlier this month, not looking to cancel that homecoming experience for students. What can we do that provides a pivot that is a safer environment? So that we aren't dealing with the ramifications of positivity, quarantines, close contacts, et cetera, but still let students engage in that experience. That's what we're looking to do when it comes to mitigative steps and processes. Now, I know we've had multiple conversations, like once we come indoors, things begin to change as it relates to the conditions and climate that we're working our way through. But for now, we are in, things are pointing in a positive direction.
President Bates, if I may. I know that there's other concepts similar to this in terms of quarantine considerations or call it, I'd actually call it just a change in language on modified quarantine. You know, that other counties, other places in the state or other states have doing. In the dialogue you mentioned over the summer and then as the fall has started, what conversations, if any, have had to other than this, you know, definition of modified quarantine? Being very specific, you know, there's a mask and monitor concept that's been floated around and seems to be gaining some steam across the board in Missouri and other places. Just interested if that dialogue had, you know, has transpired at all or how you would characterize that.
Amongst superintendents? So I will flat out admit that we do look at scale. And this is not meant to demean any other context or setting or county, right? We are large with large buildings and large numbers of students that as a result are coming together. We do look to figure out from a scale or perspective, what can work? If there are ideas that we can beg, borrow, right, from other places, right? Large districts that are able to do certain things, still keep students and staff safe, keep numbers down. We are happy to, in fact, do just that. Our major pivot point, given the conditions and clearly feelings of our community, is what you see here in terms of this degree of modified quarantine process. That's been kind of our primary source of conversation. Clearly knowing what contact tracing means for everyone that's involved. Also not trying to become so creative and so varied in terms of responses that then we don't have fidelity to any monitoring process.
So question, just so that I understand, you know, what you're looking for from us. You said you would plan to implement this on Thursday. So if, unless we're looking at doing something different, you're not looking for a motion from us or?
Not in this workshop setting, not at all, nope.
President Bates, if I may. I'd actually like to see us do something different than this. I think this certainly is a step in the right direction. We've discussed, obviously, you know, that view. And why I'm contemplating that is somewhat of the scale conversation that you have. If you look at our statistics and our data, thinking back to last year around number of quarantines to positive cases, those similar rates as you look at that same thing this year, the numbers are pretty stark and pretty sizable. I think we're something like 1,200 quarantines at this point, given something, 80 something cases. And I think, you know, just culturally where the mass situation is, this seems to be an inevitable place we'll be. And certainly I want to keep the mask optional place there. And so being considerate of that fact, but also being considerate of the impacts to out-of-classroom learning. I'd actually like to see, you know, this move forward with a mask and monitor concept within the district that allows those that are choosing not to mask to be quarantined, but then have to wear a mask for a quarantine period of time. So it's really just a modification, if I would, of the modified quarantine set of rules. And I think about that is from a few places. Certainly from a, you know, decision around what we need to be considerate of as educators and what we need to do specifically with that and the challenges that we've seen. The impacts that this process overall has to those in the classroom in terms of having to teach those that are virtual and those that are not. And the burden that we've already heard in terms of the number of staffing concerns that we have and vacancy rates we have throughout the district. Furthering that, there are legal challenges across the board from both sides of the aisle. Whether it's the attorney general doing something in Boone County or doing that in St. Louis County and the continued threat of doing so. On the flip side of that, certain, you know, bodies of government, whether it be like the local county health department, DHSS, et cetera, expressing what they believe are the rights. There was a county council meeting, for example, last night where they literally fought and exited the meeting, for example, last night. There is clear, call it question mark on the ownership here. And I've made it pretty abundantly clear, I believe we have to consider both things. Safety from COVID, educating kids, and the challenges that I continue to see as it relates to quarantines exist even under this scenario. That being said, I'd like my fellow board members to give me some thoughts on that. But I'd entertain a motion that changes further on quarantine rules, specifically the modified quarantine definition.
Dr. Goodson, can you elaborate? You said mask and monitor, but can you kind of elaborate and more detailed perspective on what your proposal?
Yeah, and maybe, maybe is it fair if I just make the motion as written and we can discuss and have a dialogue? Okay. So I'd like to make a motion effective on Monday, October 4th, that modified quarantine allow for asymptomatic close contacts of an exposure to remain in school during their contact period if they comply with the following. I will, I will pass my notes to you. Okay. The following would be exposed case will wear a properly fitted mask correctly and consistently during their quarantine period. Student health be monitored for any signs and symptoms of COVID-19. And I'm going to mispronounce this acronym, but MSHA or the sports guidelines are followed when it comes to participation in competitive play. This modified quarantine language change, sorry, this is not part of the motion, but to add to the point, would also apply just like it does today as it relates to extracurricular activities and things that are not allowed under the modified quarantine rule. I'd add that motion that this be at the 4% that is aligned with the county's view of when these procedures should change.
Yes.
I guess I'll go back, I'll go first. I guess my biggest concern is.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I guess my biggest concern is, you know, as a board, it's our job to assist the district in putting things that they can put into place from an operational perspective. And I know we've heard from Dr. Kane, you know, speaking to the scaler of different measures. How do we, you know, I can visualize this from, you know, an elementary perspective, but as we get into middle school and high school where the kids are moving around, how do we maintain that if a student is a close contact in third period, that their fourth, fifth and sixth period teachers know that they're required to wear a mask? How do we operationalize that or begin to consider that?
President Bates, if I may. My view slightly, and Dr. Kane, you can certainly add. We will have to do that under this current rule. So before where I think we had a modified quarantine, like we didn't force, you know, mask wearing or have to, we had to consider. Now we will, if you're wearing a mask, you have to continue. Like this is part of that rule. And so there is an essence of, this obviously would put more numbers into that in total. But there is an essence of having to understand who's supposed to be wearing a mask.
President Bates, if I may. I think it's clear where the board stands on masking. I've stated where I stand on that. I really struggle with making a motion outside of any recommendation from any education entity or health entity that relates to our district and our county.
Other thoughts?
I would just like to have greater clarity from the standpoint that what you just defined was that if a child who is not wearing a mask then becomes quarantined because of contact or the potential contact.
Close contact.
Right. All right, so the close contact, that's what I'm, that's where I'm at. But at any rate, so then you're saying then until they become COVID ill, they would then wear a mask for the quarantine time, which would be, I'm sorry, how many days was that?
We would just follow the county's views on dates.
Okay, so that's what you're saying at this point. So the child then who hasn't come down with COVID doesn't have to stay home. But so they can come to school. Can they participate in the extracurricular activities that they were going to?
Not under this motion.
Going to anyway?
No.
I'd like to know why also, where you're looking at how many days the county says, but again, not following the county's recommendation.
Purely changing the definition of modified quarantine and leaving the rest of the rules around that definition and its impacts in place. Ie, I would argue, limiting as much change as possible while giving as much opportunity for kids to be in class.
But who are you or the board to make that definition of what quarantine means? That's the function of the health department.
I think us as a board, it's our job to educate these students to the best of our ability. And I think that's in classroom setting. And I think right now there's a lot of children suffering from in-classroom setting learning because of the quarantines. And these are healthy kids that have no symptoms. And I think this would be the best way to educate them to the best of our ability.
I would like to know what the plan will be then for parents who do not want their children sitting next to someone that was a close contact? That's a completely different thing that's ever, that's ever been on the table before.
President Bates, if I may. So the way that I understand it is children have been sitting next to close contacts in school. We've had a modified quarantine. As Director Goodson said, this is just a different definition. I just want to make a comment. I find it interesting that we spent a good part of over an hour listening to a presentation about belonging. And we are, if we have an opportunity to at least consider healthy children who choose not to mask to go to school and just mastering that quarantine period, I think we need to consider that. And at minimum, I think maybe we should, maybe Dr. Kane, if you have any thoughts on that, about further discussions you could have with the health department and your views on that. There's just a lot about it that doesn't make sense to me because they're saying if a positive is unmasked, they go home. The person who's masked and a close contact, they get to go to school as long as they're asymptomatic. So the person who is actually the biggest quote-unquote potential harm, the unmasked person, it's, I don't know, it just, a lot of this stuff doesn't make sense to me. We're fine with a close contact coming to school even though they were masked. So it just, but their, but their close contact is with an unmasked individual. I just, I mean, what I would, what I would like to see is just some, maybe asking some of those questions of the health department. But again, I, I think that we need to entertain, discuss any possibility that keeps healthy children, whether they're masked or not, in school.
We have not engaged in conversation with the health department regarding this. I'm not even sure how, this version of things. We haven't had that conversation at all. We've been reacting to the news as I just shared, right? In terms of what was coming down on Monday and Tuesday. So we haven't had that opportunity to run this idea vetted at all with not only county health, but quite honestly, anyone else.
Which it would need to be probably vetted by county health to actually be a recommendation possibly. If there is a conversation, there could be all of the different things that fall under it with MSHA and other things. I'm just really, again, struggling with why we're not following the recommendations from the local county health department because we want to change it. We are not medical doctors, we do not have medical degrees. I just don't understand it.
I would argue that the influence had by superintendents in the county during the summer to change this rule would also apply to that statement.
All I'm going to say is that the entire time I have been on this board, all I've wanted to do is follow the recommendations by the people we are supposed to look to under any other health crisis that would be happening. If it wasn't COVID and it was something else, we would be following it. It's just because of what this has turned into. And I really struggle going outside of those bounds from county health. And we've always said, and I know you weren't on the board before and Director Stoli wasn't on the board before, but we were following county health last year for the most part. But nobody wants to look at it at all. You just want to make up your own thing and I just, I just don't think that's right.
Dr. Lebrat, and I go, I know you guys just got this news Friday as I understand it. But to Director Goodson's point, have you considered how you would operationalize this in knowing who was wearing a mask and who wasn't?
While either situation could be difficult to operationalize, in the suggestion proposed by the county, it would be students who are known to be typical mask wearers would be the ones who would be afforded this opportunity for the modified revised quarantine. And so since we already know that they wear masks, it shouldn't be any different for them to continue wearing that mask. Because that was the expectation is that they were wearing the mask and they were typical mask wearer to begin with. If we have kids who are taking them off, putting them on all the time, that's going to be hard to say that they were a consistent mask wearer. But you know, of course, the kid may take a two-minute break to have a snack or something, that's one thing. But we know for the most part and were able to tell last year which kids wear masks with fidelity and do a good job with it. And so we would expect that the same would hold true on the other side of that modified quarantine. And those who were wearing the mask in order to qualify would continue to wear the mask on the other side. In this particular new motion, students who did not wear a mask before are now going to need to be monitored to ensure that they wear a mask after the fact. And they're not known to be mask wearers prior. So that would be a lot to manage, not as much on the elementary level. I think middle school would be increasingly more difficult, but you still have that team concept. It would be difficult, but more probable. At the high school level, I could foresee the high school teachers checking their rosters each hour, each day, trying to remember which of their 150 students in which hours have to have masks on and which don't.
I just have a question operationally, Director Goodson. So if we're, if we do this change, would this also apply to staff? Because my question would be, staff may receive a quarantine order from the health department that directs them differently. So would we be supporting staff who chose, if they were unmasked and they were a close contact, would we be supporting staff who chose to come to work in opposition to that quarantine order? I guess I would need to know how we were going to operationalize that.
That would look at them both the same.
Okay.
And no movement on buses, correct?
That's correct. I mean, to add, I mean, Dr. Lebrat, I mean, the mask wearing point you make in terms of operationalizing what the county has put in, that wouldn't apply in terms of kids that we have to look at as it relates to bus exposures because. Because, you know, arguably, those bus exposures, they're forced to wear a mask because of the requirement. They may not be mask wearers during the day, but they may become in close contact and take advantage of this and be forced to wear a mask. And thus be have to be tracked in terms of should be wearing a mask or not. You know, as it relates to the extra work, obviously, to operationalize this, to your point, middle school, high school being the place. I mean, under this scenario, arguably, only sick kids are out. Those that test positive or become symptomatic and, you know, need a physician to do that. But in that scenario, the burden of teaching both hybrid or virtual students responding to parent emails, you know, trying to figure out what to do with certain children, et cetera, along the way, becomes some arguably less work, less effort. And so I think there's some balance there that's being considered in my motion as well.
I would like to ask a question, please. In the modified quarantine definition update, in the first paragraph, it says, "A close contact to a positive who is exposed in the classroom setting and is wearing a properly fitted mask at the time of exposure does not need to quarantine." What is a properly fitting mask? We've heard all kinds of definitions relative to the disposables, the N95s, to the cloth masks that I see people wearing. What is the definition of a properly fitting mask?
The, the masks that I see around the table are above the nose, below the, the mouth opening, I believe is actually the term that's used. But those would qualify. And I see a variety of paper, a variety of fabrics. I would see, what I see is compliance around, around this U-shaped set of tables. Regardless of mask type, right? I see compliance with not only the spirit, but the design of what is stated within that language.
Look, I fully recognize what this motion is. It's not lost on me. I, I also recognize that quarantining healthy children sucks. And, and finding ways creatively to do that has always been my objective. And, and I think this board is committed to, not to put words in everybody's mouth, but committed to meeting on a regular basis, looking at data and understanding what's going on in specific schools and pivoting if we need to. Finding ways to do that has to be our objective. We, we need to educate these kids. And the stories so far this year are heartbreaking from, from many aspects. And I'm not ignoring both sides or one side. It, it is just progress that we need to make. I, I point to the data that is trending in the direction that it is, the vaccination rates. We're in a place that likely in a month, we see a five through 11 authorization on a vaccine by the end of, the end of October. There's a, a large difference between last year and this year as it relates to very specific things. And I think we have to take steps forward there. And, and that's why I wanted to put the motion on, to see where this, you know, this governing body, you know, sits with that. And an effective date of October 4th, whatever I said, in terms of, that, next Monday allows us to operationalize this, allows us to get this out there and move forward.
I would like to say, we don't operationalize it, the cabinet and staff do. I'd also like to say that I would like to know if this is something that's passed by the board, how the school district is going to handle parents that are not okay with this. This is not, like I said before, this is not the same as it has been in the past. I know how I feel about it. I know how all the emails that come in to me, how those parents feel about it. I don't feel that this board is representative of the entire community. I hear six people saying the same thing. I'm struggling with that. I just, I think this is a bad idea to go outside the bounds of the Health Department, again. And I would also like to know the specific data that you're using base to make this motion. All of it.
Yes, just that the county's made a pivot. I would have loved to have seen it earlier, but I have to fully acknowledge that the county has made a pivot. I believe that other districts that don't have mask mandates, there's one other district in the county that does not have a mask mandate. I believe they're strongly going to consider this and most likely move toward this pivot that the county's making. I imagine districts that do have mask mandates are at least going to consider this and most definitely look at the data itself. It would allow us a window to at least see how this is going. There are other considerations with this new modification process that, quite honestly, we haven't vetted. So again, if the county were doing nothing and not providing any pivots to help keep kids in school, and keeping kids in school is absolutely uniformly the mission, period. But if the county weren't making any, any pivots, then I think the conversation looks different. But I can't in good faith say that they aren't making a pivot available to us to consider at this point.
They are making a pivot. I was actually directing that question about all of the data used to make the motion to Director Goodson.
I have a question, please. So how many, how many students do we have on quarantine at this particular time throughout the entire district?
I believe we have, thirteen hundred. We have had three hundred and forty-two positive students since we've been in school with twenty-six hundred cumulative combined quarantines, including modified and full. Some of the most recent data that we've shared is also that over fifty percent of our positives that are coming in have been close contacts from the school setting.
We have thirteen hundred currently on quarantine. So all the twenty-six hundred or so that you mentioned earlier, a good portion of them have come back and they do not have COVID. Is that correct?
They've either come back and do not have COVID, or they contracted COVID and then spent their ten days.
Positive cases.
Some of them did turn into positive cases, yes.
So we have three hundred and forty-two of positive cases of COVID?
Yes, we've had three hundred and forty-two.
Okay, we now have thirteen hundred out of a total of almost eighteen thousand students, correct? I mean, we have seventeen thousand, what, something, close to eighteen thousand kids, right? And we have gone back to school unmasked, correct?
We have.
So based on this information, then you would say that, and considering the, the numbers that we had of last year, when we were masked up, we had greater numbers last year. And I guess I'm kind of getting to this point, and I'm, I, I know this isn't going to sit well with Director Abbott, but that is that I don't see the verification of the masks, quite truthfully. I don't see that. And yet I know that people feel comfortable if they want to do that. That was exactly the reason why I myself personally voted for masks as optional. But I just don't see the numbers here that would significantly suggest putting kids back in masks at all.
We haven't been talking about that.
No, I know, I know, I get that. But I'm also saying that I also see one side of it as well, that we had twenty-six hundred that were quarantined at one time and only three hundred and forty-two out of that twenty-six hundred actually came, had COVID. Or the test revealed such a re, a report. But, so I, you know, I, I like the, the idea that we can keep our children in school. And even if they come with a mask on, I don't know. I'm, I'm just trying to show the difference here that even the kids that were unmasked, they didn't have a higher grade or, or a higher number. And when we have about one-seventh of the school that is masked up, we have about two percent of those of the population, I believe. And I think I said this to you earlier, Dr. Kane, but, and I don't know the exact numbers because I haven't seen them. But when we have about two to two and a half percent of the, of the population that are still doing the virtual academy, and then we have, and I'm just guestimating this, we have about one-seventh of the school in all the grades that would be masked up, correct? I, I haven't seen any numbers of how many's doing that. I'm just kind of guessing and based on information that I had re, had gotten from a teacher in how many children were masked up in, in that, in that class. So would I be correct in saying about six-sevenths of the population is now unmasked? Would I be about right, Dr. Kane? Would you know that, or somebody?
I have not taken any data on the number of students who mask or don't mask.
Is that data you could get? I think that's, I think that's relevant. I think it's important.
Yeah, in a non-masked mandate, a non-mask environment, it's, it's purely choice at this point. So that would be very, very challenging data to gather, very challenging.
It would be a matter of just simple deduction, how many in a class and about how many on, on an average, let's say of an average class. Class size would be averaged between, what, twenty-two to twenty-five students? And if you only had three or four, that would be approximately one-seventh of the class?
I think it depends on the school. I know there are schools that have higher rates of masking in them and different grades that have higher rates of masking. I know you gave me your example earlier, but I know there are, there are schools that have higher rates of masking. So I don't know, making an average guess would be accurate.
We don't have any numbers. Wouldn't it be easier because we know that the majority of the students are unmasked? Do we know that?
Absolutely say in a non-mask environment, mandated environment, that the majority of students are unmasked, yes.
So.
Across the district, you could say that.
Correct, correct. And that's what I'm looking at, across the district. So you don't have to count all the, all of the ones that are unmasked. It would be simpler to find out whose, whose mask would be easier to get those numbers. Is that possible to get those numbers, to determine that? Again, I'm kind of wondering, you know, how in the world did we start school? And we had, we, out of nearly eighteen thousand students, we've only had three hundred and forty-two?
Dr. Garber, is there a reason you're wanting the data? What, what were you trying to understand?
Have an intelligent conversation about, about what the total number is. You know, I think we, I think we are deserving of that, especially when we are going to say, you know, with, with Director Goodson's motion that anyone who, I mean, it would only, it only sounded to me more rational that if you were going to have the majority of students that were going to be coming to school without wearing a mask, then the masking mandate or the quarantine, I should say, the mod, the quarantine situation, how would you not get a whole bunch of young students that were not masked? How would you, how would you not get them quarantined? Because we've all seen the little pictures of the two people that are standing side by side. But if you only have one-seventh of the class, what are the odds of having, what are the odds of having the unmasked person not quarantined? And isn't that what we're talking about? I mean, this is what I believe I'm seeing that the parents are sending us about all the quarantines. Some of them with, some of the children with two or three quarantines already. So I would like to know, quite truthfully, if you could get the information for me, please.
I do believe Director Garber, I think you had emailed us this question. So with, right before we met this afternoon, I think you had asked about the number of students. So in, in the suggestion that county health proposed, students who are masked would then, with only one mask would need to be in action. So only the close contact would have to have a mask. It wouldn't have to be double masked, it would just the close contacts. Only one mask would need to be worn in order to prevent that student from quarantining. We would expect, or I guess we would hypothesize that maybe more students would wear a mask in the hopes that they could prevent themselves from quarantining. So it's, number one, it's going to be more numbers anyway because it doesn't have to be double masked. So more students would be safe from quarantine. And then additionally, if more students chose to wear a mask, noting, knowing that they could kind of control their own outcome with quarantine, we would expect those numbers to improve again.
I have a few things. I was already talking. Jerry, Dr. Lebrat, did you say that fifty percent of the three hundred and forty-two positives were from school exposures? I just want to make sure I had that clear.
We were not able to have access to all of that information since we were not leading the tracing initially. But since we started leading around September 16th, and again, there was a date where we shared some of those responsibilities, fifty-four percent of our positive cases were close contact from school.
Okay. A piece with the operationalizing of Doctor, or Director Goodson's motion, if the people aren't wearing masks now because of choice and they're told they have to wear a mask, how is the appropriate masking going to be handled? Because there are very strong feelings in the community about not masking at all. So how is that going to work out? And then again, I, I'm going to circle back to, we aren't the Health Department. We don't set quarantines, that is not our function. Why are we trying to do that?
My belief, this is a, you know, board-approved motion, if so it is. And thus, non-compliance with masks will result in a quarantine outside of the classroom. I think I've answered my question, or your question, second question, as it relates to how I think this board can make that decision.
Could you refresh my memory, please?
We are educators first. And the number of quarantines that we've seen both last year under a full mask day, mask mandate, and this year are significant. We are seeing that number be very significant, as Dr. Lebrat put that. I want to be considerate of learning impacts to staff and recognizing to, you know, Dr. Lebrat's add to my comments around data around county and state as it relates to infection rates, positivity rates, vaccination rates, different in this county than other places, et cetera.
I would like to see the specific information that you're basing your motion on.
So I have a quick question. You mentioned, and again, not opposed to the idea, I guess my big concerns are operationalizing it. And then, you know, administration just having the opportunity to vet all of the pieces. I know we just started talking about it tonight. Are there certain pieces, Dr. Kane, that are in the motion that you think deserve additional vetting?
So we, we, in full candor, all last year, from Mar, I'm sorry, actually, March of 20, had been in contact with county health, regardless, good, bad, in-between, numbers that were going on. When we had a situation at Wentzville Middle, when we had a situation at Duellow, like we would dive in and have deep conversation with county health. We have not had that opportunity at this particular point in time. I, but masking, will you, Mr. Docket, go back? I'm sorry, go for it, slide four. That consistent and appropriate mask-wearing, I do think is a different ask of someone that is volunteering, volunteering to do so versus the mandate. I, I, I think that's going to be, that is going to be the point of contention, period. That is absolutely going to be the point of contention. And we, you will flat-out receive emails, phone calls, social media posts. My kid was wearing. When the school determines that they weren't being consistent in wearing that, it's going to be a tension point. Likely to hear in a variety of settings. I won't even provide too much meat to the bone there, but you're going to hear that a lot. We, we, we haven't had these conversations. So I don't know how county health is going to, I'm not sure what the reaction and response is going to be.
Dr. Kane?
Quick question, if I could, please. I think the board has stepped up like when, come time at Duellow. And when we went double mask, as I like to refer to it, and I have heard you also, Dr. Lebrat, say that. Can you tell me how many students we kept in school at Duellow with the double mask?
I would say we have not kept data on that because in trying to expedite the process and the contact tracing of who does need to go, we haven't kept a tally of who gets to stay because of the double mask. I think we could go back and, and try to surmise what that number might be, but I don't have that readily available.
So then if I could make this statement, maybe President Bates. So what, what we accomplished at Dwellow, we really do not know. But what we do know that if our students, parents would step up in double masks within our district voluntarily, it would be of great benefit. There's no question about that. I think the, the motion we have on the floor is probably going to be driven and I'd probably help drive it. But I do think it's important that our community as a whole, our school community, if they would wear the mask, it would be a benefit to all. Thank you.
So I would like to make a comment. When you were talking about logistically how to advise of those people who are supposed to be wearing a mask, you already know that because of the fact that you are doing the contact tracing. So that information, and one of the reasons that I believe that we started doing this was I was actually seeing, and I'm sure my fellow board members saw that, that they weren't being notified from the state or from St. Charles County. They weren't being notified till, actually, sometimes the day that their quarantine was up and they had no idea. So they weren't quarantining anyway because they had no idea. So all I'm saying is that, you know, now that we're doing that, you know exactly which child needs to quarantine. The scenario was what happens if they discover this in the first couple of hours and they have X numbers of hours to go the rest of the day? Is that, was that correct? Is that what someone said? How would we know if the other teachers and the balance of the classes knew that? So I don't necessarily know why that would be a difficult thing to notify because I would think that there would be some system put in place that you would notify some teachers about other issues besides this. So I think we already probably have a system in place. I would assume we would. If we don't, we should. But again, Dr. Kane, you said this in the very beginning and we've all said this. We went through last year, we saw how our children, how, how they actually literally got behind in their education to the point of, I've, I've seen the numbers now, anywhere from four to six months in arrears. And I, our purpose is to keep as many of our children in school as possible. That's what you said our goal was. That's what my goal has always been, is to keep our kids in school. And we just heard these numbers out of thirteen hundred kids, or actually twenty-six hundred kids that were on quarantine. We only have thirteen hundred now and out of the, out of all of the twenty-six hundred, that would be from the beginning of this year, we had three hundred and forty-two COVID cases. So I get it, but on the other hand, I don't want to see what happens when the kids are not in class. I don't want to see that. I want them all in class if they can be there. If they don't feel well, they'll stay home and the parents will keep them home as well.
I would like to say that I publicly say that I think it's irresponsible of the board to vote on a motion that doesn't have data presented to them for that motion about quarantining, which is not our function and has not been vetted by the local health department.
I believe that you said earlier, Director Abbott, that you would like to have things more relative to the district rather than what's going on in Florida or anyplace else. We're all reading about those as well.
I'm fine with relative, approved by the health department.
But we have information already.
What information and what statistics and what data? I feel like this is a motion and no disrespect, Dr., or, I'm calling you doctor, Director Goodson, but you're not a doctor, you're a layperson. And I would like to see all of the data that you're basing your motion off of to change the quarantining, which again, is the job of the health department. I think it's irresponsible for the board to vote on it if we don't have that information and it's not been vetted by the health department.
I believe that the health department also left it up to the local boards. I believe that that was what we all knew in the very beginning, that we had the right to make some decisions more specific to our particular circumstances.
I don't disagree with that and I think that the, the buck has been passed by multiple people. I've watched all of the meetings. I watched the one on Monday. I think unfortunately that there aren't going to be mandates put in place for anything, so we're dealing with that. That's what this is. Unfortunately, we are not health officials in our capacity as elected officials. And so I don't know how else to say, you know, this isn't our lane. Our lane is to educate kids. Our lane is to educate kids in a healthy way. We have recommendations from health experts that say how to do that and we're choosing not to follow that.
In the early part of the summer, the CDC actually came out with some guidelines for the school districts and I believe, and I'm so sorry, I don't remember her name, but she was actually with the, I think she's an assistant to the, what do I want to call them? Anyway, the teachers' unions and they came out with the reference to where they wanted to be. And their reference was to mask up everyone. So I guess what I'm going to ask is, at what point in time did Desi become qualified to make that decision? Actually, this was the Assistant Secretary to Desi. So when did they, when did they become doctors and when did they become nurses?
I'm referring specifically to St. Charles County because you said something about it being relative to our specific school district. And so I believe that if this motion needs to be made, it needs to be made in a future meeting after the information is presented to all of the boards so we can see it and make a decision based on that and it's vetted by the health department for our specific school district because it's outside the bounds of what's being recommended by our local health entity.
And the key word is recommended.
Right, because there's not going to be a mandate. We live in Missouri.
Director Goodson, is that something, just curious, is that something you'd be open to is going forward with what we have today and then allowing the district to vet, vet this motion and, and bring it back to us?
I, I don't understand that necessarily. No, I like to keep the motion as is with an effective date on Monday.
I would like to know how it's going to be operationalized for parents that at this point in time, this isn't something that's ever been on the table. Like I said, how are we going to handle that? Because I know there are parents that are not going to want their kids at school sitting next to someone who's been close contact exposure.
Would it be possible to have a special meeting within a couple of days? Would all of you have your information together in time to do such a thing?
I think we could, but I think Director Goodson said he'd like to leave the motion to be voted on tonight.
I'd like to call for a vote.
All right.
Would you like me to reread?
Yes, please.
All right. It was moved by Director Goodson, seconded by Vice President Bryce, to put into place effective Monday, October fourth, that a modified quarantine would allow asymptomatic close contacts of an exposure to remain in school during their contact period if they comply with the following. The exposed case will wear a properly fitted mask correctly and consistently during their quarantine period. That student's health would be monitored for any signs or symptoms of COVID-19. Misha guidelines are followed when it comes to participation in competitive play. And this procedure would be applicable only if the student's school building of attendance is at a rate of positivity of under four percent.
All right.
Can I ask a clarifying question as it relates to athletics and activities after school? Just to be clear, they would be bound by the same guidelines as any other modified student and that they would not be able to participate in any activities or athletics. That's, that's what the current stance is. I just wanted to make sure that we're clear on that because that question will come up day one.
Yes, that should be the way to think about it, John.
Could I ask for clarification? Will those, will those students then be excused because of COVID? Will they be excused? From, you know, from the activity. As I said, that seemed to be a criteria last year.
All right, they will not be able to participate in, in the activities after school if they are considered to be on modified quarantine.
Well, what I, what I meant was.
It won't count against them. They just won't be able to participate.
Okay, all right, but it won't count against them. There will be like a wave. They're waived that particular absence. They're waived that. Because that was a situation that was last year. And some, some kids didn't get waived. So I'd like to make sure that we have in there that if they weren't able to participate, that they are, they have a legitimate reason for being excused.
Sure, that would be that they're on modified quarantine. That would be the rationale for that.
All right, thank you.
All right, I will say that the vote has been called. All right, can we do a roll call vote, Catherine?
Director Abbott?
Nay.
President Bates?
Nay.
Director Garber?
Aye.
Director Stoli?
Aye.
Secretary Shaper? Director Goodson?
Aye.
Vice President Bryce?
Aye.
And we have five to.
Motion carries. All right. With that, we would need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
No, I don't think we do. As I understand it, doesn't our COVID mitigation strategies expire as of today or do we need to address that in any way? Like if we did nothing, Curtis and Dr. Kane, would they just continue going forward or do you need a motion to do that? I just want to make sure we're following.
It was literally, I believe the motion from the last meeting said it would be discussed here.
Okay.
Yeah.
This evening. Personally, as, as it relates to that, I think we leave those things as is. We revisit in our meeting going forward unless the other board members want to have a motion or discussion about it, but that's my view.
Yes, you're talking about the two percent, right, or, or the three, or the five percent?
It relates to that chart, right? Whether recesses, zoning, all those other things that we agreed to as a board last time. All I'm saying is it sounds like Dr. Kane doesn't need a motion for us to continue those. My view is to continue those. You know, we've made this change obviously with contact tracing. My view is to keep those other things consistent. We revisit that when we meet again.
And we, sorry, and we do have Dwellow on, on to the ninth.
Yes, thirty days, yeah.
I guess my.
The percentage changed. It was five percent and now it's four. So is that just going to change then?
I mean, my perspective was that we accepted the piece that came from the county. The only piece that changed was the motion that you made that was different.
Clarify that. I, that's not how, Dr. Kane, you put it when we put it. We, we just motioned specifically as it relates to modify quarantine and the percentage related to that specific mitigation strategy. As I see it, without a motion and move forward, we stay at a five percent level as it relates to mask optional in specific buildings. We would have then that grid of mitigation strategies. For example, visitors aren't allowed, the five percent as it relates to recess, zoning, other things would remain consistent until we meet again and discuss.
May I read the motion?
I only talked about modified quarantine.
But it says positivity under four percent, but.
Specific to that definition.
To modify quarantine.
Correct. Not mask, not other things.
We have clarity.
To adjourn?
I second that motion to adjourn.
Okay. All of them favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion. Meeting's adjourned.